Put technology in your job description. All right. Grand Forks County Commissioners come to order a couple of minutes late, unfortunately. All Commissioners are present. Commissioner Peach is joining us on Zoom. Can you hear us, Commissioner Peach? Can you hear us? Cynthia?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Okay, the first matter before the Commission is the approval of the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Ross. Do we have a second? The second, we have a second by Commissioner Knopf. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are passed. The approval of the order of the agenda, are there any additions from anyone? We have a motion on that then?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the second to approve the order of the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like? Hearing none, I entertain a motion. Motion by Knopf, second by Ross to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, youth work certified shelter status. Who's appearing on that?
I am Melanie Highcamp. I'm the Executive Director of Youth Works.
Okay.
So, good afternoon Commissioners. Youth Works began running the the shelter and the attending care program in Grand Forks after Lutheran Social Services had to rather quickly shut down. We have similar shelter attending care programs in Fargo, Bismarck, and Minot. That we did learn and so the within probably this last year, starting in 2022, that the shelters could not have both attending care and county custodial kids. In they can be in the same place, but they have to have separation. They cannot be together. And so I think some of the shelters further out west, Williston and Dickinson, were able to modify their buildings to do so. Grand Forks County is the one county that opted to do attending care themselves. So you will be doing the attending care program in the site we're currently in where we're running both programs together. The Department of Human Services, in an effort to make funds available throughout the state, had startup funds of $150,000 to try to locate a building, get the appropriate staff, training, all of those kinds of things. Initially, we believed that in Grand Forks, we would be able to secure a building that was affordable and, excuse me, and secure a building that was affordable and also to to, you know, to use the startup funds to be able to provide that emergency shelter that's needed for your county social service youth in foster care as well as kind of those emergency cases. Without going into a lot of detail about the new laws regarding children moving over out of the juvenile justice realm into the Department of Human Services, which is also affecting some of how youth are seen in the juvenile justice world. We were looking at trying to locate space. Unfortunately, I've had workers up in Grand Forks trying to locate space for some time now, and we really have struck out. There, the old Listen Center, to those of you who know where that is, is a empty building that we did get a bid, you know, kind of like what would it cost to lease that building and to modify the building so that we could run the emergency shelter through through that facility? And it would have, it would cost $5,000 a month is our best estimate, and that may even be low. And that, in our view, is cost prohibitive in terms of how many youth may actually need to be sheltered. So we're, as of August 1st, we would have needed to move and have located space and to be running this shelter August 1st. And Grand Forks County will be taking over the attending care program in the site they're in. But at this point, we do not feel like we're going to have success being able to find a location, remodel a location, and have that ready to go. So we informed the county, the the attending care site, that it looks like we're not going to be able to run a certified shelter in Grand Forks, unfortunately. Most of it has to do with the affordability and the modifications that need to be done, even with that $150,000 on the space that it would require.
Now, I talked with Ms. Hanson just briefly before the meeting.
Okay.
And using any part of our juvenile detention center for the present time is a problem because egress windows, is that right?
That is correct. And I called the Department of Human Services for a variance and asked them for if they would consider a variance for the certified shelter, and they will not. They declined and said they will not do that.
Yeah.
I thought we could continue to do that until perhaps there was space or something available.
Hey, you know, and while I was trying to come up with some kind of help or solution for you, and I thought that we do have space in this county office building. But that would pose some problems for us, but there are no egress. All modern buildings don't have egress windows. I mean, none of them do.
That's right.
I mean, you'd have to find some adequate building that's going to have egress windows for you.
And I think the department might say that that's what the $150,000 to modify windows could be used for. But, you know, again, it's, I mean, so they would say you could change out a window in a building. I know that Dickinson did that, but.
I think our problem is that the egress windows would not work in that area because they would egress into another room or into a dead area. And the other problem for us is I really don't see us spending any more money on that building because we're hopefully going to be in a new building in a couple of years. So we're just shredding money, putting it into that building.
Yep, that makes sense. I mean, that's kind of a dilemma, you know, that and we initially, when this first happened and we found out that the youth couldn't be kept together like we've been doing, when we started looking right away, but one building looked like it was very hopeful and it sold very quickly. So, and since then, we have not found anything.
You know, my, my other question is, do all the sites in North Dakota have egress windows? I'm skeptical of that.
They have to. So they, you cannot place in a certified, in a certified shelter for those county custodial kids. You cannot place a child in a facility without an egress window. And sometimes the fire inspectors even require a sprinkler system in the building. We had to do that here in Bismarck. We had to to install a sprinkler system in the building as well.
Any comments, questions from the Commission?
So egress windows to me are always like, you're in a basement and you have an egress window. And so if you have a facility where it's on one level, then you don't have to worry about that, right?
No, they would say you still have to have an egress window wherever the children are sleeping. They have to be in a room with an egress window so that the firefighter can get in with their tanks and there to get the child out of the room.
So I'll interrupt just a moment and we'll go back to Commissioner Knopf. So theoretically, you couldn't even have them rent a nice motel room to keep them in because they don't have egress windows. Nobody has.
That, that's probably true.
Yeah, you'd have to find a basement, I guess. Go ahead.
That answered my question. I was confused on that.
Yes, what is the definition of egress windows? You need it to be? This one that opens or certain size? What, what other characteristics?
Your, your fire department, I don't know if you have anyone there from your fire department at your Commissioners' meeting. I apologize for my lack of formality, Commissioners, but they, your fire department or your fire chief may know more than myself about that.
I, I don't think we have a solution for you from us because our, you know, even if we came up with money for egress windows, they will not fit because they don't egress outside, they egress into another room. So that's not going to help you on fire.
Right. And I honestly, I'm not coming before you to look for you having solutions because I, I would be surprised if you do. I think we've tried to think of everything. I just felt like it was right to let you know what was happening, especially because I do believe your social service. I mean, this is a tough position for your, your social service workers come August 1st. But I just want you to know that we did our very best to try to figure this out. We just kind of have hit a, a dead end. And so the staff that have, our work for us, we were told could apply for the positions, if there's positions open over in Grand Forks County for the attending care. But, and again, this is the Department of Human Services requirement. I don't know whether if Grand Forks County, they just cannot use, I don't understand, like, is it possible to place children in an emergency situation in your current site? If the payment doesn't come through the Department of Human Services, I don't know the answer to that either.
I do know if they were placed where they are right now, there would be no payment for, for them because it wouldn't be classified as a certified center.
Okay.
Right.
The site's still there. I mean, it's an emergency, but it wouldn't be a certified center.
I will say this, of all the sites that I, that we have worked out of, your site to me was one of the most ideal sites in terms of line of sight, in terms of supervising youth. So it's just really unfortunate because I would like, I would have liked all my sites to really look or feel like the, the facility you have. So.
I mean, juvenile detention doesn't have that. You don't have to meet that requirement. We don't because we're a secure detention center, which is a lockup. And we have diffuse light for the kids within each one of their individual units. And then we have a great fire alarm system and, you know, it's so, our system is elite. I mean, it's one of the best I've ever seen or worked with. So I know it's adequate. I just don't understand the guidelines that have been placed from the Department of Human Services. Like, they're too stringent, and I think there could have been a variance given this, you know, agency to continue working, provide a place until a place is found, but they wouldn't give us a variance. So.
Okay, this question is for Ms. Highcamp. Okay, if you're out August 1st or whenever here, where are the kids going to go then? Or it's going to be a human services responsibility at that point?
Yes.
Well, they'll have to come to us, I guess.
Is that a foster care situation?
It's, it's not really foster care. It's like short term, isn't it? Up to 72 hours?
Um, no, it can be longer than that, and it is. It, many of the youth that we have been in, all of our shelters are coming. They're foster youth that have, they, the worker cannot find a placement or there was problems in their, the placement and it was disrupted and they cannot find another one. So we do have, we do, in certified shelters, they will be taking foster youth.
And so how long would they be with you?
Seven, the maximum in a certified shelter is seven days, but you can get us another seven day extension. So the maximum period of time would be 14 days for foster youth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions? Are you still with us, Ms. Peach? Yes, you are.
Yes, I am. I have no questions. Thank you.
Your portfolio, so I thought I'd ask you. So thank you.
I, we have enjoyed working with all the folks in Grand Forks and certainly took it over during COVID, and I just want to thank everyone for their support. And I mean, it, it was a very easy professionals to work with. It's just unfortunate this happened.
Well, we'll, we, you know, don't give up on us yet. We'll keep thinking about it. Maybe we'll come up with a spot for you somehow. I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your help.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Based on if there is no location in Grand Forks that's going to work, we may have to go to the fire chief and ask for a variance because if you can't place children in any environment, what do you do?
It's, it's not the fire chief is our problem. Bismarck will not grant the variance.
Well, then we may have to talk to some legislators and see if they can talk to the state because just because we don't have a facility available or they won't give us a variance in order to have the children there for temporary care, what do you do? I mean, we have to address that.
Well, the thing is, is we're responsible if something happens to them. You know, and I mean, that's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is their care. You know, that they're in a safe and secure surroundings and all their needs are met and, and, you know, business, not as usual for them, but, you know, keeping it as normal as possible. But that, that's a sad part of it is how are you going to do that? When you don't have any opportunity to.
Well, we'll keep it under our box and see what happens. Next up is Grant Skye for Mr. Chair, you can scratch that. They were not ready to present today. Thank you. So we jump to public health.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I sent our update to you on Friday, I believe. And I'm just going to give you a few talking points of where we're at with COVID-19 right now. We are considered at a low transmission level for Grand Forks County. Our new cases have been steady throughout June in each week's period of time. Our vaccination rates are level, and we've now added the age group of six months to five years. So we may see those that are fully vaccinated, that percentage drop just a little bit by adding a new cohort. It's still at 58.1%. We're continuing to test at a variety of locations. Our location remains at the Fritz Pollard Performance Athletic Center. And our positivity rate remains pretty high there and right around 10%, which is an indicator that we're either not doing enough testing or we have a lot of COVID. But what we think it's really related to is that the people that are directed there are people who either have an exposure or have symptoms. And a vast number of people are now testing at home and that's not reported. So our positivity rate is a little skewed for those reasons. We've seen a slight increase in the wastewater reporting. This could be due to a variety of factors, including the fact that the wastewater was fairly diluted during the month of May and early June when we had heavy precipitation. We'll continue to watch that and see if it aligns with our critical cases. And then lastly, we're continuing to give vaccines at Grand Forks Public Health Department, as are all of our partners. Right now, we have seen the main driver being second booster doses for the age groups and individuals that are eligible for that. And we're starting to do the children's vaccines for those that are six months to five years of age. And we have both vaccines available for pediatric population, both during Pfizer. So that pretty much wraps up my report. There's lots of slides there that Michael prepared for you to look at. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
A question, but just a comment, you know, with the 10% positivity rate and what have you. So, make a wild guess, because there are so many unreported cases that are testing. Or 15% positive.
More likely, for sure enough, our rates actually lower because people are testing at home. They're not going in for care. They're testing negative. They're just checking. So overall, our positivity rate is probably lower than, than that. But what it does indicate is that there's still a lot of COVID out there in the community, in fact, that people who are going.
People I talked to, it seems like they're, they're, they are positive.
Oh, they're testing.
At home, they are positive and then they're, you know, they're sheltering in and what have you. So.
It could, it sounds like it could go either way.
Yeah.
We just don't know, unfortunately. But the good news is that people are, have that availability now, which we didn't have before.
And, and, but it is still alarming. I mean, we know COVID is still out there. And it is alarming when you see these large gatherings and, you know, precautions are being taken, whatever. And then are testing kits still available?
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. For sure enough, we do have test kits available. And anybody who needs them for their business or their service group or their event or anything that they want them for, you just contact us at the Health Department and we can deliver that. We have a wonderful right now. And we actually have seen an increase in requests for test kits.
Are we advertising that?
Yes, it's on our Facebook page, primarily our social media.
And, and the only reason I ask is because on Facebook, it's not uncommon to see where people are saying they've sent away for, they've purchased and sent away for kits and they're still waiting on them and all this other stuff. And I'm thinking, why, you know, when you can go, I know whole economy is giving away. I think, well, I think there's many businesses that have, are providing those test kits. But, you know, people don't always think about going to public health website and looking, you know, where to look for that. And so they're trying to buy them.
And we will certainly maybe elevate that message a little bit so that people are aware that they can get them right here in the community. They really don't need to purchase them, though we don't want to take away business from places that are selling them. But also we know that sometimes it can take a little bit longer to get the government supplied ones through the postal service.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Next, we have emergency management.
Good afternoon. Hopefully we'll be great. I think it's been several months ago now when we talked about the buyout in our villa. It was a, it's a repetitive loss property. It's one homeowner. It's on the corner. So we did get the contract. It's a contract between state DEs and our county to receive the grant funds that will be used and to buy out this property from this homeowner. And I'm only here to ask for Chair's signature. I did run it by Haley a couple of times. She didn't have any legal concerns. And then in case you do have any questions that I'm likely not going to be able to answer, we do have Todd Jarrett online on the Zoom call from state DEs and he's the one that helped us actually get this grant so we could buy out this property.
Questions? Yeah.
Sorry, I always got four questions.
Questions are good.
So this is, is this an township that is incorporated or not incorporated, or is this one of those situations? Is I don't know if I'm.
We do, any towns in Rapid County that are unincorporated. Our villa is incorporated as a township.
It's not one that we didn't get involved. Correct. They, they're not eligible to actually, Todd Jarrett, feel free to jump in here anytime. That we can, that the state can enter into an agreement with the township. They only enter into agreements with the county. Situation where the township could sell another piece of property close to that and have the same kind of situation with flooding.
Well, the township wouldn't sell the property.
No, but the first.
Property owners.
They sell the property, but then, you know, the township, there's, if they have properties along Cooley or whatever, I mean, if we aren't involved with the zoning, they can do zoning in where they want. These good properties. Is that, it's not a situation? I don't think it is. This, this property is, is on a corner. It's, it's a pretty town lot. Yes. Okay, all right. And he just, he gets watered from both directions and it's, he's remodeled his house so many times. So no, so this will, with the grant and the oversight from state DEs, this will facilitate us destroying the house and buildings and whatever. And it will not be allowed to be built on forever. It will have to remain grazes because remember, Nick West City could have bought me a John Bear sergeant collar.
Very good.
Yeah, refresh us. So we have a record. Does this cost the county any money?
This will not cost the county any.
Great, moves on.
You do.
No, no.
Yes, yes. Once this happens, it will be county-owned property and it will be maintained. Just keep it mowed and whatever. You can put non-preventant structures on it. So if you wanted to put up a picnic pavilion or a picnic table or something, you could do that. But you can't put any objects. It cannot be free business. We have several properties like this in the county that we saw through this process. This is my first one for the county.
Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the hazard mitigation grant program. Some grant agreement with Chair's signature.
Thank you. Second.
Well, second.
Second by Commissioner Knopf. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
It's all happy.
Thank you. Juvenile detention.
Good afternoon, Chairman, all members of the Commission. As you guys heard earlier from Melanie Highcamp, we will be taking over attendance care effective August 1st. And it will be operated under the Detention Center. Currently, the county utilizes the Youth Works program with a price tag of $35,000 annually. By taking over the facility, the housing of delinquent juveniles will become a more streamlined process for our law enforcement officers, eliminating their wait time for staff to arrive and providing them more time to be on the street and serving the public. We currently have staff needed to provide coverage for both the attended care site and the detention center with the possibility of slightly more part-time hours on the weekends, depending on how many kids we have in the attended care. With the addition of attended care, we will be eligible for reimbursement from the U.S. Department of Justice pursuant to the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Act. There are several items that are eligible for attended care reimbursement to include direct supervision costs, staff meetings, training, meals, supplies, and equipment. These are all outlined further in the document that I provided all of you with. Additionally, we plan to establish a daily cost to house out-of-town youth who would be held in attended care. This cost would match our current out-of-town retention cost of $225 per day. Today, I am requesting an additional lieutenant position within the center. This wouldn't be an additional body. It would be a promotion within the facility. This position would.
This position would work directly under me and oversee all of the duties that come with the addition of the attendant care site. They would maintain receipts or copies of purchase orders as well as monthly staffing hours that they would submit to the state for reimbursement. While adding an additional lieutenant position, they require a slight increase in budget. It might also even out as there the county will be saving that $35,000 annually. There will be eligibility for reimbursements and potential payments from out of county placements. Moving forward, we are confident that we can make taking over attendant care a seamless transition that will benefit the county, the law enforcement community, and the youths that we serve.
Where should they? Yeah.
So how many beds do we have at juvenile? At the juvenile, there are ten. Since they go, well, not right now.
We we have sixteen bins, but we with we went down to ten with COVID to keep them separate.
And so then will these juveniles be?
On the attendant care site.
Okay.
The one that's below.
Downstairs.
Downstairs. Okay. How many gets down there?
Right now, there's six.
Yeah.
And is that inadequate?
Because these kids would only stay for ninety-six hours and they're usually out within twenty-four to thirty-six hours.
I have two questions. Number one, have you run this through human resources?
Yes.
You're all in favor of that?
Yes, they haven't.
That's, we like to hear that. That's good. And then number two, just for clarification, although it's a lieutenant position that it's going to be working in tenant care, it'll probably also spend a great deal of time in the juvenile detention.
Yes, back and forth. But they'll oversee all of the attendant care things, but they would also be scheduled up.
Right. So if there's problems, that's the person that's going to take care of the attendant care problem. So, okay, that's all you know. Thank you. Sounds normal. Can we have a motion if anyone's interested?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Okay. And one, thank you, Commissioner Peach, and we have an interjection from.
August first, August the date we're looking at. Yes.
Okay. Approval of the lieutenant position brought us first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Want some passes?
Thank you.
Okay, next, the American Rescue Plan ARPA requests. Start out with us, maybe?
Sure, happy to. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have received our second pot of ARPA funds. The Community Violence Intervention Center had had come before the commission last year and asked for about fifty thousand in American Rescue Plan Act funds or ARPA funds to help supplement some of their revenue loss, which was resulting of the pandemic. The the board had had offered thirty thousand and directed the C V A C to come back for requested twenty, twenty thousand from the second pot. And I think they're requesting just a little bit more than the two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I I think we're, our numbers are off, but I think.
We're just missing a zero.
Zero.
A couple of.
A lot more, Mike.
Not twenty and thirty.
Two.
Five hundred thousand and three hundred.
They're not having enough coffee. You can breathe. That was just my error. They're they're five hundred thousand. Now they're back for the request, the additional twenty thousand, but it was around twenty-six. Two hundred. Moving on, and then the, we have representatives from the mission who are also here. They'll be requesting ARPA funds as well in the amount of, was it fifty thousand, I believe, as well. So I think, yeah, this should be of C V A C as A and Northland as B. And with that, I'll get some more coffee.
Maybe we hear from CBI sheet first and just a comment, I did advise them if they could find money that's appropriate under ARPA, that at least I would be more inclined to look that way, that we we probably aren't going to be able to give them the money in our general budget this year. And ARPA would be a better source for them. And so I think they've done that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name is Tracy, Service and Chief Financial Officer for C V I C, and they're close. And we, our initial request last summer was five hundred thousand, and then the commissioners approved three hundred thousand of that five hundred. And we do have a signed subversive agreement in place for that. So that remaining two hundred thousand is still on the table as well as Mr. Chair, for which we are submitting a supplemental request for more funding. So our initial request was based on the economic harm that we experienced due to pandemic. We had the council our largest in-person fundraiser and had a demonstrated loss of about five hundred thousand dollars in that year. And so finally, as twenty twenty-one progressed and our numbers came in, we are also experiencing an uptick and an increase in domestic violence. So in our request, you can see the numbers there. Overall, we had a seventeen percent increase in our unduplicated client served, but I did kind of break it down by the programs that we offer in the county and the cost per providing that service to each client to come up with the additional two hundred and six thousand dollars of a funding request of ARPA.
You know, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I see supervised visitation and exchanges, which is a big number there, almost a hundred thousand. Those are actually under court order. Am I right? Is that true?
We do some services for the, this is not clear what we do for the county, but yes, those other ones are under court order.
Any questions?
What is the ARPA funding look like?
Well, I think we're going to have a separate meeting on.
Spending all of your time.
Yeah, no, I think this is, this is probably doable, but we're going to have to have a separate meeting on the ARPA. This is to hear their request and we'll put that on the agenda for our ARPA meeting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much.
So rather than the two hundred thousand, it's two hundred and six thousand.
Two of it.
I do want to, I do have clarification. So, um, you know, we requested the initial five hundred thousand. This is an additional two hundred thousand on top of that five hundred. So I just wanted to clarify. So it's a total of seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
That might be more problematic. Two hundred is easier for us to reach, but seven hundred, that's a huge number. But, yeah, we'll think about that. I I don't, maybe you could send us a letter clarifying that a little bit. I don't, I didn't understand this. I thought this was two hundred and six thousand or above what we gave in the last.
Oh, okay. Yeah, our initial request again was five hundred.
Yeah.
Subversive for three. We're, there was two still on the table, and then we requested an additional two. So our first request was based on economic harm. Our second request is based on increasing.
Okay, so this would be four hundred and six.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're gonna have to, they'll have to be in a week or two. Thursday. Okay. The mission is next.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. So I can get stuck on a pot. And while you were talking about egress windows, I have a building full of egress windows over there that potentially there might be a way we could make something. As we dwindled down our number of clients, I have a floor that we use for office space and a big dorm that used to be the women's dorm. That is now where the backpack program is housed. The backpack program does not need to have egress windows. So I'm just hearing about this here. So if you would like to sit down and visit about that, I'm all about serving the community, the greater community the best we can. So if we can be of service in that realm, give me a call and we can talk.
Maybe you would check with Robin Spain and Bridget Hanson of juvenile detention, and they could talk to High Camp and this markets.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to just jump in the middle of something. I don't really know.
Well, that would be fine. We appreciate the offering. We're kind of in the middle. So we are privileged with all of the requirements. So those folks know what to ask, what they have to have. So.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm kind of familiar with the tenant care, so.
Yeah.
I I get that. But we would be, I think I would be very willing to see if we can be of assistance in any way. Uh, so Marie is, Marie Hennessy is our grant person and community relations guy, and he's going to talk first about the impact financially due to hardships from missing out on fundraisers and special events.
Yeah, the chairman, commissioners. It's nice to hear. I've never been here before. Tom was nice enough to ask you though. I don't know if you guys like trying to be at times, but it's a quick snapshot of our four major in-house events and another large that that occurred during the year. We have our projections, jazz ensemble. We projected twenty-five thousand dollars. We had a new plan for backup sending to your sponsorship. We have great hopes for that. That was very early on before anybody did anything virtually. The thing just collapsed. We still don't know how that plan's going to work. But we it's not the game of that. We hope for twenty thousand dollars for a golf tournament. It was held virtually. Return of seven thousand. Our run and bike race, which a lot of these things, you know, people I think it has. It's one thing to run by yourself, but it's another thing to run with your friends and people just weren't doing it. So we thought we'd get fifteen thousand. Hardest tip was our mission old banquet silent auction, which we will every year. We're lucky enough, we pivoted and have a virtual event. And the the banquet, the silent auction team, but got a drop of about thirty thirty-three, thirty, thirty, thirty percent. The silver lining giving heart stay. We projected sixty thousand away. Collect the seven thousand. Our marketing manager said, well, it's great. It's because of COVID, but it's continued to improve so that actually we think that now meaning to do with COVID has to do with that, the marketing manager, that calling. So you can see that in our events, this is just an estimate, sixty-three thousand dollars is an estimate, would be a jazz ensemble money for the pandemic. I don't know. I'm not positive of that. We thought it was a great idea, but I started out when I first started talking to Mr. Ford, saying that just be down to land, probably about forty thousand dollars. We didn't come here with the idea that we asked you, but it shouldn't be single nickel that we lost, I think we lost or that was spent. These are all related to COVID. Directly related to COVID. So that's why we got ARPA. We did receive other funding as well. And that idol grant. So I wouldn't want to pretend that we had to go elsewhere. I have the fortune of being able to work remotely to look for other funding sources and other supports. As far as additional expenditures, additional people, additional products. I think Sue was on the ground to turn this factor and she could talk our expenditures that we didn't have.
So we were open the whole pandemic. We had to close our doors to new incoming clients and put people in hotels for just, I think, ten days maybe. Meanwhile, I have to give kudos to Debbie Swanson and her staff at her place at Ken because they were phenomenal partners, phenomenal community partners. And we worked hand in hand with them to make sure that if somebody presented in the community and didn't have a place to be, that we would get them into a hotel. We provided food. We provided case management. We handled guiding the transportation of them from wherever they presented. If they came to the mission at two in the morning and said they're positive for COVID, we worked to get them into a hotel. And Debbie and her staff were phenomenal to partner with. And, I mean, she went above and beyond. So I just want everybody to know that. Uh, so we were open twenty-four, seven every day. We took on some additional roles with the unsheltered COVID piece. Uh, we expanded services so that kids who were in the mentor program, who were getting help with their homework when they were doing virtual learning and they were going out to the mentor center, which started then, we started bringing food out there so that those kids would have food to take home in lieu of the backpack program. We kept the backpack program going. But more importantly for the county, we started expanding our food services, first of all, because there was a glut of incoming food because restaurants were shutting down. But we also knew people were having a hard time in our four county region getting to food. So I'm just going to give you a snapshot of what happened just this last month because that component of what we're doing has continued on. In the month of May, we handed out thirty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-nine pounds of food. We did six hundred eighty-nine food baskets, a hundred and eighty-six of which were mobile. So not people coming to the mission, but us going out to in-town locations because people can't always get here. Plus, we have also gone out into Grand Forks County to some of the more rural towns and into our two, three other counties in our region or social service zone. Beyond that, we did fifty-three hundred meals last month. So pre-COVID, anybody could come into the mission, eat lunch and dinner. And we would have roughly, roughly, I would say, three quarters of the people who came and ate, ate were our clients. And then the other twenty-five percent were community members who had come in. That number has flip flopped. We now serve lunch and dinner out the front door. You come and pick up a takeout container. Last month alone, we did fifty-three hundred meals, thirty-seven hundred and fifty, of which were to the community, not to people staying at the mission. We know that a lot of people have been economically impacted by COVID, struggle to put food on the table. We have done an awful lot with people who need rent assistance. Our social workers, we have hired, um, we now have an additional social worker. We had to hire additional food staffs. We had to hire a person to handle sanitizing the building. And we have not been fully staffed, I don't think, since COVID began. I can't go out and fundraise because I'm keeping my weight on the pot, so to speak. And to get out and fundraise is difficult because people just aren't still letting you into their business to meet with you or employees. And fundraising still is not back to where where it was pre-COVID. We have changed our mission statement and it's on that sheet that Murray gave me. We're all about empowering people. And it has to do not just with homeless anymore. It has to do with those who are dealing with housing insecurity, who are dealing, or housing instability, food insecurity, and homelessness. And I am happy to tell you that today we just signed a lease on an apartment, a master lease with the housing authority, where we are now going to start doing family sheltering. So if a homeless family presents anywhere, can be in the county, can be all the way up at Pembina, we now have a place to put them. And we intend to expand those services to meet the needs because that's what we're all about. So thank you for your time today.
Any questions? So Sue.
So Sue, Miss your phone. Sue, what? So what's the number you're looking for?
We greatly appreciate fifty thousand.
Not the sixty-three that you're short?
We would gladly appreciate fifty-three thousand dollars. We would take sixty-three or fifty. We would take sixty-three. No, we would gladly appreciate fifty thousand.
Well, we appreciate that. You're one of the few that asks for less. But that's consistent with the, the mission and your people. So yeah.
I mean, we could actually make that ninety-three if we decide it's coming over. But we've also added the substance use treatment connection within our facility with license addiction counselors. So we haven't just been still, so we continue to throw. So I have job security writing grants. Well, we, I also know from writing grants that sometimes the maximum amount allowed is not the smartest thing to ask for. Again, prove to you that five thousand.
We appreciate.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll put it down.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So my question is, and this is out of curiosity is all. It's got nothing to do with much of anything, but there's, you said there were four counties in your region. And so are the other three counties, are they contributing?
Oh, they're next on our agenda.
Okay. Yes, we will. As well. And so will that be for the same $63,000?
Well, we don't know if they have our funds.
Yeah, I know.
But so we do plan, we have made private presentations up there. And we have done some work because we do mobile food pantries up there because we have a lot of private donors in those other counties. We're working as the time becomes available now to get out there and make the
It was just a curiosity question. I just tend to ask.
I skipped it. Thank you.
Good. I'm glad I did. So, but thank you for all that you do. I mean, we're, we're lucky to have you in our community and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
And please follow up with Rich here.
Yes, I will. I'll catch you.
We seem the same approach moving out there.
Now, do they come before us again or?
They can decide that if we want. We've heard their presentation. This one seemed very reasonable.
In order to find.
Yeah, in order to find.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. NDSU Extension.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Falcon, Attorney Commissioner. I'm Leslie Wilbonow and the East Coast Director for NDSU Extension. And I'm here today to ask you about two things. One is refilling a vacancy position. And the second one is a job designation for another employee. I believe you have the memo in your, in your packets. So the first item of business is asking for refilling the Family Community Wellness Agent position. This is a partnership between the county and NDSU. The county pays 50% of the salary and NDSU pays the other 50% plus the benefits for the position. Molly Sobey had this position through February 15th and resigned her position. And she was a .8 FTE. She was hired as a .1, but we reduced her FTE due to some personal circumstances that she had. So I'm asking the commission if you'd be willing to partner with us as a 1.0 FTE.
Mr. Chair. Yes. And you, you worked with HR and we talked to them about?
I haven't talked to HR about this. This person has an employee record of NDSU.
Yeah, I understand. But I was just wondering if, if you do have a need for a 1.0 rather than a 4D, right?
Yeah, we do.
And that was authorized before?
Yes, it was authorized prior.
We did Molly's hours change roughly, did you say?
Roughly four, forty years ago.
Forty years ago. And so we had it budgeted for a full position and then you reduced her hours and
Stayed included for that?
And it stayed budgeted for that up until this request, I believe. Didn't, or did you?
Um, last year was the first year that I budgeted at a .8 FTE. We had a change in my position change. Kimmer will send us the report before. She was budgeting at 1.0, but I had chosen to do actual cost of accounting. For the fiscal year '23, I have a request that I went through Kerry Knutson for a 1.0 position.
Um, I'm, I'm moving my math numbers here. And, and we just went through our budget process and we didn't approve any new positions other than the swanstead got one, which was desperately needed. But we made her pay for almost all of it out of her budget. So it really isn't costing us a lot of money. Now, the way I'm seeing this, though, it's probably not costing us a lot, right or wrong. It's costing us about 10% more. Probably consistent with the state. So.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that statement.
You need to motion others, one just on this topic?
Yeah, I think so on this one.
Your approval of the change from point eight to a 1.0 position.
Okay. Second from Commissioner off. Any further discussion? Away.
Detective Wind. If possible, I'd like to put in a request recruit with NDSU and start a job search within the next month. It usually takes about two months for us to get through the hiring process.
Okay, so if we made it, we're okay, August, September 1st, within
Yeah.
It's just about two months.
Yeah, I feel like that is a very reasonable timeline. So it'll be dependent on the person.
Yeah, is that fine with your motion?
That's fine.
And did we have a second hour before we second half? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate partnership with, with the county to do great things together. The second position item that I want to talk to is Chelsea Hammond's position. She is currently has a dual appointment with NDSU Extension. She is a parent educator and a family community wellness agent split. I would like to change Chelsea's job description to be just a parent educator. And then she would have responsibilities as assigned to her for other extension programming. I do not have the history of how her position became a split appointment because it was done prior to me. Diana, you were a portfolio holder at the time. I don't remember.
That would be a more effective use of her talent.
Yep. Yes, it would be. She actually, she has a masters in parent education. She has a great find in Chelsea. Her efficiency is lowered because she has to have dual trainings for both programming areas. She's a member of two teams. The administrative time of her position is quite a bit larger than if she was just 100% parent educator. So I thought that would be a better use of county dollars, Chelsea's talents and NDSU dollars to reclassify her as just a parent educator. And I don't mean just Chelsea.
Oh, I know.
But as a single position. So I was wondering if the commission would be willing to do that or would like to have a discussion on more pieces of that.
Commander. Who will take those? They're responsible. We've got people covering that already. We won't need someone new, will we?
No, I, a lot of her response, Chelsea does like the food preservation education. That's specifically in her job description and food safety. And with the FTW 1.0 agent that we just approved, I would put that back into their job description. So they would fully commit to all areas of family community wellness programming.
I, you know, I'm fine. I like to have the department heads manage your own departments. So if that's what you think you need, I'm fine with that. My question is, does it have any fiscal impact?
It does not have any fiscal impact.
You're golden.
Since all these positions are partners, you know, we feel like we have to be a good steward for that partnership.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just don't know. Do we need a motion to do that request or is that something that your department can control?
Mr. Chair, that's a state as an NDSU position.
Yep, and we can, I can pretty much handle it on my end.
Which is not a county position. So I think, I think you could tell NDSU that you
Really to reclassify.
Conversed with us on it and we are fine if they want it. If that's what they want, we're fine.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Veteran service.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, my name is Ford. Today I have the final version of the Veterans Court, Judiciary Court MOU at the 867 of your patents. So the Northeast Central Judicial District ourselves, our department here. It's thoroughly reviewed. State's Attorney's Office has a bold final review on it as well. For approval and signature today.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Northeast Central Judicial District and Grand Forks County Veterans Administration Office.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's for, you had chair signature, right?
I think I said that.
He always do something. Good, good. We're good to go then. Thank you, Will. Anything else?
I have a copy if you need it. I don't know if it's necessary for the signature.
I made a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Board. I have nothing for the board today, Mr. Chair. Ms. Wanstead. What? Moving along, we're down to committee reports. Let's start with Commissioner Ross. Throwing curveball at your box.
All right. Yeah, I just overwhelmed now. We have a meeting next week with the city council after their city council meeting on Monday about bridges. And as the MPO member, I will be attending that along with Mr. Ford. So other than that, the fair was a success. Diane was there probably more than I was. But it was a beautiful fair. It was really nice.
They cooperated for the most part, other than one night.
The big night. Yeah. So.
Training. Training races.
Other than that, that's about all I've got right now.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
I attended the ribbon cutting for the Space Development Agency out at the base. That was, everything they do out there, pretty impressive. It's an exciting change and addition to the base that you all know. And then morning, I attended Brick by Zoom and EDC, we, Thursday morning, and apparently we had a color committee meeting as well on Thursday morning.
Okay. Mr. Rock.
Um, all I have is just the fair and it went well. They did a nice job as always. You know, I think good attendance. So you'll get final numbers. And, and I facilitated the canvassing board. Was it every last Sunday?
Thank you.
Last Monday? Well, and information for us on that. So thank you for that. And then the only other thing I have is IT interviews that are coming up. I think that we don't have specific dates set, but I think maybe starting next week sometime. I haven't talked to HR other than my availability. And so, but we haven't any definite, and I think there are four applicants, three applicants?
Three.
Okay. And two were from before?
No, nobody from you.
Okay. I must have dropped that. Yes, I made it up. So anyhow, that will be coming up soon. So.
Week of July 11.
Mr. Peach.
The Airport Authority met last week. The runway construction is going according to plans. A couple of change orders, not anything major. They are now going to begin getting ready for the customs, new customs building that's going to be placed out at the airport. That should be coming, I believe, in the next three years. And then the university is also looking at new space and they're doing some fundraising for that new space. Because we are so busy out there with student pilots and the regular flights coming in and out of Grand Forks, they will be looking at a new tower as well. But that tower will be funded through the FAA. And it's just a process to work through the funding and find out when we get the money and when that, when that new tower will be put up. And that's about all I have.
Hey. Let's see, all I've got primarily is we met with the Grand Forks Herald's leadership on the Home Rule Charter, Mr. Ross and I, and some of the Home Rule volunteer people that are on our committee. And I think you all got, saw copies of it and Harold and comments. And it all went very well and I was pleased the way it was and appreciated everyone showing up. And the rest of what I've got isn't all that important, so we can move on. I'm thinking it's new business. NACO conference delegate.
Mr. Chair, from the commission, you need to appoint a delegate for that and I have to help.
Is there any?
That you?
I'm going to appoint Haley.
Yeah, but you're going for sure.
I will go, yes.
Well, that's, it's a no-brainer, folks.
There we go. I hope that we approved.
There's no?
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Well, I'm sorry if you wanted that spot.
Or Haley, I mean, it's. Thank you. You're, you're on. So thanks for bringing that up. Next correspondence, is that just for our?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so we come to the item eighteen.
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ross. Second anyone? Second, second by Commissioner Peach. He was refusing. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.